Seven thirty, so I'm calling the United States Department of the twenty-ninth School Board to use order. And doing the roll call, Patrick W. Nsp is asked. And you'll start with your question, will you, Chris?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the Foley School is to bring together students, parents, staff, community, provide quality education, and emphasis on developing the whole potential of the individual.
Thank you. And we have an opportunity or open forum for services to address the school board. And we have two individuals. All right. And then we're going to forward to the approval of the agenda. And I'm going to ask to add five A, which is the consent agenda. It's a tabletop to board members here. We have some late entrants as far as what we need to take care of on the consent agenda. So I'm proposing that go to five A. So I would need approval of tonight's agenda with that addition.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ken, submitted by Wayne. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we will move on to five A, which is the consent agenda. And just reading those off, we have a bus driver resignation from Bruce Shaw. We have a summer BA resigning, Kendra Turner. We have girls varsity basketball coach resignation, Jay Storkham. We have summer health aid nursing staff for the district. This is for summer, Michelle Coleman, Monica Carrick, and Jeanne Boyle. We have coaching hires there, a head volleyball coach, Courtney Stiganski, and assistant volleyball coach, Mary Spiner. And for the 2024-2025 school year, we had a non-renewed EA, Carlos Stahuski.
And Chair, did you say that the resignation of the bus driver, does it determine?
It's a resignation. It's the first in our packet. So I would need a motion and a second to the consent agenda.
I like motion to approve, second to the agenda. Second.
Motion by Wayne, submitted by Ken. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have Psychologic representing here, Andy, is this my presentation?
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Psychologic has been in partnership with the Foley School District for coaching their year. And our specialty areas, working with infrastructure and looking at the key elements that project the building. Oftentimes, we tell school districts when we walk through this building in Foley, especially if you look at the floors, and you look at your gym, and you look at choir performances or band performances, and you see pretty incredible things. And what the community doesn't see is what's behind some of the doors where the Boilers are, where the lifts are at. And so our company works with school districts to give them an appraisal, an assessment of what the conditions of their assets are. We say from rooftop to blacktop. And so we started with a comprehensive assessment with our engineers and our facility analysts. And we've met with your team. And before I go any further, and we talked about this before, but you've been so impressed with Darwin and his team and the work that he has done. There is not a more knowledgeable facility in the state that I didn't have. And as a former educator, walking through the hallways, not only knowing where all the air handling units are, and the last time that the filters were changed, and all the details about the building, but knowing just about every kid's name and every staff member's name, just want to give a lot of credit to Darwin and to his team for the work that they do. With that being said, you know, a lot of the building is, the equipment is dated back to its original date of construction, which is about 1990. And the life cycle of equipment, of equipment is, you know, in that 20 to 30 year range. And so much of your equipment is past its useful life. It's been very well maintained, but it was not designed to the standards that exist today for indoor air quality. And so it's not a matter of when, it's not a matter of if you need to replace those, it is a matter of when. And so districts work with us to help with that proactive planning, to figure out how to do that. And as we have moved forward in our partnership, we've presented between eight and 10 times between the facility committee and your school board to give updates on our findings and information. The state has provisions for school boards to have board authority to generate funds to fix and repair assets that contribute to indoor air quality. So when we talk about that, not only do we look at the equipment and the designs of that equipment to meet today's standard, but we also test those areas and we share that information that previous board meetings by looking at the CO2 levels. And that also coincides with where our findings are, is that the equipment is not designed to today's standard. So in many areas, we were finding conditions, whether not hand, alert, or alarm, that definitely can have an impact on cognitive performance. And so when we look at those areas, CO2 is a big indicator for us. It's a tracer gas that allows us to also look at if we can't get the right amount of fresh air into spaces to remove the CO2 levels, we also aren't able to get allergens, toxins, viruses, and some of those other items out as well. So there is a great importance to indoor air quality and proper ventilation. So taking out your air and replacing it with fresh outside air, and that needs to be done mechanically. So we looked at all of your systems and looked at what would qualify under board authority to create systems that were designed to today's standards. In looking at making a decision for scope of work, we consulted with your facility committee and had some deep conversations about what they wanted to accomplish from that. And so with the efforts of your facility committee, some of their key priorities were making sure that the mechanical systems were efficient, planning for future needs and expansion for HVAC systems. There is a desire by this board to make sure that the intermediate building also has access to cooling in time. We aren't able to qualify those stat equipment at this specific time, but any work that will be done will be able to encompass the intermediate school at a later date. So planning for the future was important to this team. They wanted to have modern control systems that optimize scheduling and programming. Currently, a lot of controls are on the mat. Moving to direct digital controls is a priority for efficiency and also making sure that there's consistency in the temperatures and the rate of air exchange in each of your By state statute, for your school board is allowed to have one indoor air quality project per building. And so one of the other areas was to make sure as much that could be addressed would be addressed in this project's scope. As we've already talked about, there's a desire to make sure that there is the right amount of fresh air being brought into the building. That certainly was a priority throughout this project. And then again, credit to your team, there was a desire to use or reuse assets where feasible. And then of course, germane to all school districts and specifically Foley as well, and as this understanding impact on any decisions to your community by making a decision to these board authority. So as you look at the summary of work that is included, the scope of work is to replace pretty much all of your mechanical systems, from controls to air handling that's having centralized chillers, making sure that they are designed appropriately to meet today's standards. What we've shared is that there are different funding streams that come into school districts. And each one of your students has about $380 that they get annually, simplifying that. But that is used to make sure that you can maintain everything in the building. If you take your building, turn it upside down and shake it, anything that doesn't fall out, you're able to use those $380 to maintain your facilities. Facilities are super expensive to maintain. And a lot of the districts that we're working with right now, as I mentioned in our work session, some of them are experiencing statutory debt because they haven't maintained their facilities, or they haven't used the right funding sources. So when facilities become outdated or they become in need of replacement, oftentimes districts are having to use their general funds to fix, repair, or replace. So we encourage districts to make proactive decisions. One, decisions that allow you to access your A to school credit for farmers, so having safety A for those things. Your school district also has qualified through some pretty savvy decision-making a long, long time ago, has qualified for maximum moment upper A, so you have access to that for a few more years. And so making those critical decisions right now are important to maintain the health of the building. So what we looked at is the total scope of the project. And again, that is getting all your mechanical systems. A $200,000 house would have an impact of approximately an estimated amount of $4.33 per unit. And that means that there would be a levy that would be approximately $13.6 million over 17 years. Those are large dollar amounts, and those are dollar amounts that all school districts struggle to face and to pay, but they are requirements to maintain facilities. And so as we've talked about before, that proactive management, so we can have other funds that are designated for other areas don't have to go to your facilities, ends up helping financially in the long run as well. So with that, you know, we are able to move forward and design the project and work with the municipal advisors, others, to make sure that this gets submitted to the state and that construction can happen in the 2025, summer of 2025. By taking that action, you are able to save approximately between 5% and 7% in escalation. So with that, and there are some board members that served on the facilities committee, and I don't know if they want to discuss any of our interactions. They work pretty diligently and invested a lot of time to make sure that they knew the project's scope inside and out. But at this time, I wouldn't be willing to entertain any questions you may have asked and any questions.
I have one question. You're talking about the CO2, the concerns of that. Years ago, we did have two areas in our buildings that had mold. Has it at all been taken care of, or do you have no evidence of that?
Yeah, our team did not find evidence of mold. But what we do find is that in buildings, you know, with dehumidification and they're going to control things, you're able to mitigate some of those items, but our records did not indicate any mold.
I think, Andy, you did say that we do need to act proactively and we need to use fiduciary responsibility with taxpayer dollars. And working hand in hand with Psychologic and Ellers, I believe that we're doing that as a board. And our general public will say, well, we are making all these cuts, but this is a completely different topic. And we still have to maintain our facilities and indoor air quality for our current students and our current staff. So that's why we're proceeding ahead with this, or we will after discussion action to.
I think Psychologic has done a wonderful job of bringing this to us, very transparent, willing to answer any questions that we ask, and understanding of where the money's going, when it's going to be done, what's going to be done. I think it's going to make a difference in air quality and just add to our overall wellness.
Does anyone have anything else to add or questions for Andy? So then this is an action item, so I would need a motion and a second to proceed.
I like motion to proceed.
Second.
Motion by Wayne, submitted by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, same as. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an adjustment to the 2024-2025 school calendar.
During our work session, we discussed this in the meeting. And we also taught the reason for the adjustment was due to the RE Act and then professional development that is required of our staff. And we discussed Phase One teachers and who that includes. And I'll tell you, there is a presentation, and I think that there's probably copies of anyone who's interested in reading that more thoroughly. But in the spirit of time to get to the point, is looking at adjusting our calendar to fit the requirements that, again, are required for professional development. And throughout the school year, we've educated our staff about what the RE Act is. We've educated our staff about professional development and the direction of the district's so choosing school, which is with Core, or also known as Ola. We've talked to our district advisory committee. And we've also spent a significant amount of time in staff development, district staff development, discussing how to accomplish the training that is required. And after discussing with district advisory committee as well as staff development, the overall opinion is that the best way to move forward is job embedded professional development, meaning that we would accomplish the training that is required of teachers to complete during the instructional day. And the current calendar that was adopted last year for 2024-25 does not have the amount of time necessary for instructors, for teachers to complete the training. And roughly what we built into the calendar is about 49 hours of job embedded professional development. The training can take up to 54 hours, so we looked at somewhere in the middle to accomplish nine modules. And one of the questions that I think is important for the public to understand is that some may say, well, can teachers do this in the summertime? And I think that teachers ultimately would love to spend their time with students and do as much as they could in the summer, but that's not possible the way that this training is organized. For this training, it's important that teachers have the materials and then part of the materials, which are both synchronous and asynchronous, is to practice what they learned and then reflect on that. So we need students to be able to do that. In the summertime, of course, we don't have as many students in our buildings. So looking at adjusting the calendar, and we have the ability to do this for next year, and we discussed a number of different options. And what we've come to present is a mix of early dismissals and then full days. And so early dismissals, we tried to keep it a consistent calendar for families. And one of the things that we felt important, what we heard from our district staff development committee, is our secondary teachers, that they want to keep their kids in class. And primarily, this is impacting our elementary teachers along with a handful of other secondary instructors. So if we can train everyone in one year, have an adjustment for one year, that would be the best case scenario because the legislation has granted school districts two years to complete Phase One training. But I think it's best if we move forward in one year. So looking at the early dismissals, as I mentioned, having our secondary students in session, our elementary students would be dismissed and early out. And recognizing that this may cause potential issues for childcare for families, we're going to offer a childcare option for kids to be in school. And we'll work through community to offer that to our families, so childcare won't be an issue for families that will be impacted. Full day dismissals, you can see my dots in paint, and it's linked to days that we have an extended break, so that may be official for families. So we have three of those planned throughout the calendar and also notice S's. So S's are for synchronous instruction. And the professional development is asynchronous and synchronous. And on those full days of development, we would not have any students, so they would be professional development for all staff. You know, as part of this, you know, I realize that this isn't ideal, but again, this is the requirement. And the second part is that, you know, I believe that we still will have our EAs here full days and that we can, our kitchen staff, our custodial staff, we can provide good professional development for those employees as well. So, you know, I always want to look at the silver lining of things and realize that this could be a positive that comes from something that is a mandate for us to do this training.
So, just to be clear, so the high school, on days of early dismissal, would still be in session?
That's correct.
But on the full days, they would not be in session?
That's correct.
Okay. On your early dismissal, of course, you have to run extravestments, correct?
No. You know, our thought is for those students that stay here for childcare, that we would operate a normal bus schedule at the end of the day. The other thing that we would make sure that we would maintain is our preschool schedules and such a B-based program. We have some more details to work out in that to bring back to the board. But again, our meeting basically will be looking at this adjusted schedule, so at least we can let families know.
So the early dismissal would not have bus stations coming in at room minutes?
No, we would keep.
They have, excuse me, they have opportunity for child pickup or opportunity will be to reduce school for childcare. So as previously discussed, this is an ideal, but it's something that we're mandated and we have to provide the training. And so this was, after many hours of discussion, best case scenario.
Okay, one other question. When you go back, going back to the high school, so in other words, full day two, did they have a special workshop, just for high school? Or a full day?
Do you mean professional development days?
Well, you're talking about the four teams and five quality. If you have full days for your high school also, what would they do? Do they go and play?
So we would look at professional development opportunities for our high school teachers. So whether that's the reviewing data, we also could bring in different speakers. There's a number of different things that we believe that we could provide.
Yeah, but well, three days.
Three days.
I can't see that.
And it's important to note that with the elementary, because there's a minimum of minutes, we have a long minutes. That's.
I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing.
There's a minimum amount of minutes that are required in that, that's been adjusted for next school year, only one year, those minimum requirements. So we would need to put this calendar.
And it's time out classroom for students, which you know is our family. But the training I'm having is going to full benefit for our students.
I think so. And just one more thing as a point of clarification, we're looking at students six through fourth grade, would they take, would still be in class?
Correct. Is there any other discussion regarding adjustment to the 2024-25 school calendar? Then I would need a motion and a second.
I like a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Nathan, submitted by Sharon. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our next topic is staffing and staffing for the 2024-25 school year, seven thirty.
Just to entertain some information regarding staffing for 2024-25, it's important to remember that we announced early on in the year, January, what we felt our reductions were going to be. And we announced at that point, $1.2 million, and we have a timeline. So we've adhered to the timeline. And it's also important to remember that our fiscal year in the school district ends on June 30th. And so at that time, when we're looking at announcing full budgetary reductions, we would make that at that time when we have the information regarding our revised budgets because we had a lot of moving pieces this year, primarily with negotiations. And we also had to be clear on the monies that we're receiving, not only locally, but from the state as well. And so when we take that into account, we are a position that we're able to recall and reinstate positions as well. So one of the positions that we knew, that we were concerned about, was our second grade position. And one of the things that we had talked about in our finance committee, as well as that we had presented, is that our second grade numbers were higher than the parameters that were set by the board. And we had talked about, it was very important that if we were financially able to reinstate positions, that this was one of our, it was our primary, and it was a focus area for us to reinstate. And when we looked at doing this, there's a lot to consider. And one that we talked a lot about is enrollment and having a stable enrollment. And we have had a stable enrollment with first grade. And we also look at our kindergarten numbers and what we're projecting. Because if we project high, that's a difficult grade level to always project, but we feel like we're in a solid place where we are with our kindergarten numbers. And so again, we're able to reinstate our second grade and in the funding, there's, you know, link some things here together. We have had, we have had a retirement. And again, looking at the difference of how we're able to replace with the cost of a teacher retiring and then hiring a teacher with less experience, you know, past savings. But one other motion I'd like the board to entertain is a literacy lead instructor. And our literacy lead instructor, we receive literacy incentive aid. And we have received that in the past, but it hasn't been restricted dollars. Now it's restricted, so we can only use the literacy incentive aid for certain things. And one is for a literacy lead. And we do, we will be required to have a literacy lead. And it only makes sense if we're starting the literacy work that's coming here to have someone in place to start the work with us versus stepping into a position when they haven't been part of the training, they haven't been part of the staff conversation. So it's important that we link this together. And we believe that when we're able to shift our dollars for the literacy aid we would have for a staff member, that opens up some funding for us as well. So again, I would entertain reinstate in a grade two position as well as posting for a literacy lead. And then the final position that I'd like to entertain, I'd like the board to entertain to reinstate is a high school dean position. And I want to make note and really thank Erin Nasca because without her and her knowledge of school finance and being creative in funding these positions, this would not have happened. So we are funding the high school dean position to be transparent a number of different ways. One is through gifted and talented funding, which we have done in the past. It's currently that position is being funded by Vincent and Downton. We also, when you save schools money, you were at the last school board meeting, for those of you that are here tonight with us, you heard that the board adopted or accepted the contract, approved the contract with the city of Foley, and they're safe schools money. Our school resource officer is, for lack of better words, less expensive than our previous school resource officers, so that opens up some. So that opens up some state school funds that we're able to put towards the high school dean position. You've heard me talk a number of times about the student support personnel aid. And again, in light of the budget, we were waiting to see how those dollars could be spent. We received confirmation on the 20th when the session ended, legislative session, that we're able to use that money towards the high school dean position. We'll also use transportation aid. And then we'll also use achievement and integration dollars. So with all that being said, that will support the high school dean position. You have questions?
Hearing no questions, I would need a motion for the second.
I like the motion of the group.
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed the second. Sharon, okay. Motion by Nathan, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have some director contracts that have recently been settled, the 2023-2025. And I'll just read through the positions. The director of buildings, grounds, and custodians. The director of child nutrition. Director of community education. Director of activities. Director of technology. Administrative assistant, HR, Mars coordinator. And I think that was it. So Dr. Perry, did you want to highlight any of those contracts?
We, Stephanie and Ken have to serve on this committee. So feel free to add any information, but I'd like to thank you three of the coaches up here tonight. But this is a lot of hard work, negotiating contracts, there's a lot of hours spent. And our goal always is to make sure that we offer fair contracts to all of our employees. And so in light of the directors' contracts, this was something that was very important to make sure that we were, we were in range of comparable districts in what we were, the wages and the benefits that we were offering to our directors. And you'll notice that we've had some language cleanup, cleanup, especially in severance. Our severance really wasn't well laid out in our contract, so we fixed that. We looked at Aaron Casper on that language. And then also making sure that it was clear with the severance. Severance isn't when you resign, it's when you retire. So language, things like that, we do have probably some more cleanup in next floor on what we recognize, just to align things more with our contracts so that they're similar. And then one of the other things that we've had to add is duty because that impacts these contracts simply because these are the employees that work in the summertime. And I think that, that's my highlight. Stephanie or Ken, do you have anything else to?
Yeah, you've explained it very well. Not that, I know not everybody's happy about anything, but if you have, if you have as far and come prepared, we know that's what we can do. Stephanie?
Thank you. So I would need a motion and a second for these director contracts.
I like the motion of group contracts. Okay.
Motion by Wayne, seconded by Ken. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we have an opportunity for board member and Mr. Your comments. Dr. Perry, do you have anything more you'd like to add this evening?
I am trying to say in my voice, congratulations, so I think I've talked enough today.
Okay. Thank you. Sharon?
Yes.
Stephanie? Ken?
Apparently I have to, my voice also.
Yes. Wayne?
I'm good, thank you.
Nathan? All right, and I just want to let the rest of the board know that mediation is set for Friday, May 31st with our EAs and mediator. And I believe her first name is Tiffany. So that is this coming Friday, mediation with our education assistance. And then I just want to briefly touch on tractor day. I know there is controversy for some people regarding tractor day, that should have it, shouldn't have it. But just as an observant, I live right here in the corner, so I saw the majority of the tractors going by. And what I saw was with police presence there directing traffic. I saw our students having fun. I saw responsibility with driving very expensive equipment in the rain. I saw them being very watchful for traffic, foot traffic and other traffic. So appropriate road safety. And I saw a lot of patriotism with the flags and red, white, and blue, and kids cheering and kids having fun. So that's all I wanted to say this evening. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll take the group.
Second.
Motion by Ken, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes for adjournment, and it is 8:09.
Thank you.
Thank you.